Okay.
All right, I call to order the first session of the budget work session. And we do have a quorum. It's nice to see everybody in attendance. I don't think we've seen that in a couple, a few months. So it was very nice. Anyhow, we are open to, for discussion of the two, twenty, twenty-one budget. I thought it would be easier and more efficient to do it this way instead of having just a budget committee where you only got two or three people and then it's got to be all relayed again. This way everybody gets firsthand with it and we're able to, should be able to communicate it better and come to a better conclusion on what budget, budget will be. So we don't run tight on it at the end of the, end of June because it's got to be approved by July first. So this is the first one of three. So Melissa, you want to start out?
Yes. Good evening. I'm going to start the meeting with a really brief explanation of some terms that we use when discussing the budget. Mostly just as a refresher for council members and also the public. Sometimes I hear the terms misused with the public and there's a misunderstanding. So we'll do, I'm going to do a really brief explanation of how our funds work and some terms that we use. And then I'm just going to leave it to you guys to tell me exactly what you want the budget to look like. If, you know, brainstorm, it's all up to you guys. I'm going to take notes and then we'll go from there. All right. So tonight, the purpose of tonight's meeting is for council to brainstorm and discuss the FY twenty, twenty-one, twenty, twenty-two budget. Ask questions about the current budget and our future needs. Begin conforming a consensus and then direct the town manager on what council would like to see in the, in the March proposed budget. The first bit of information I'd like to do a refresher on is the fund structure. Our general ledger is broken up into two types of funds. General government type funds and proprietary funds. General government funds, as you see, are the general fund, the capital projects fund, the EDA fund, events and activities and debt service funds. Proprietary funds, they're run like businesses. They're enterprise funds. That's the water fund and the sewer fund. The general fund is the town's primary operating fund and it accounts for revenues and expenditures related to direct and support services like the business office, town council, town attorney, treasurer and human resources. It also includes public safety, public works and community development, which is planning and zoning essentially and the boards and commissions related. It does not include the economic development authority. The general fund revenues are generated mostly from taxes. Either taxes that are our local taxes like meals tax, transient occupancy tax, personal property, real estate, bank stock, business license, court fees and fines, which are generated from tickets, trash and recycling collection and state pass-through taxes, which are sales tax and communications tax come directly through the state and we don't really have any control over those. We get what they give us. Lastly is grants. We have some standing grants at funds, especially the police department. Expenses are the salaries and related expenses of everyone within those departments we talked about earlier. Office supplies, equipment, any of the police department operations, the cost of trash and recycling collection and then repair and maintenance to buildings and grounds. Enterprise funds are established to account for the operations, investing and financing of self-supporting activities that provide services to the public on a user fee basis. The town has two enterprise funds, the water fund and the sewer fund. The revenues from the water fund come from the bi-monthly water bills, account setup fees, which are charged every time someone comes up and sets up an account on a house. Collection fees is when a new tap is added to our main. An availability fee is also charged at the same time, which is the user's share of the infrastructure cost. And then of course, grants. Expenses is anything related to the water, staff, payroll expenses, operations such as the testing permits and treatment of the water, repair and maintenance of water towers, tanks, wells, meters, valves and mains and debt incurred by any water projects or upgrades. Sewer, parallel to the water, we collect the revenues, or we get revenues through collection of the bi-monthly water bills, account setup fees, connection fees, availability fees and grants. And just as the water expenses, we have the sewer expenses, which are related to the salary of the staff that operate the plant, the sewer operation itself, which is the testing permits and treatment, repair and maintenance of the infrastructure and the debt incurred from sewer projects and upgrades to the system. Transfers between enterprise funds and general funds. As we talked about earlier, the general funds, the general type, business type activity, government type activities is taxed, is revenue generated by taxes versus user fees for the enterprise funds. So fund balances do not cross funds without a fund transfer. Enterprise fund dollars remain in their respective funds to be reinvested in infrastructure and pay down debt. And transfer of general fund money into the enterprise fund is an indicator that the utility rates are too low and is not in the best interest of the taxpayer. Because a large portion of our utility customers live outside of town and are not taxpayers. So we're using taxpayer dollars to benefit people that don't pay taxes. Other funds that I'll touch on quickly and within the, the general government funds is capital projects, EDA, events and activities and debt services. So the revenue from capital projects, EDA, debt and debt services is generally just a transfer from the general fund. Events and activities does generate its own revenue through vendor fees, sponsorships and donations. Expenses within these funds are all directly to, related to the purpose of the fund. So the EDAs expenses are related to business recruitment and retention. Events and activities are related to the cost of holding an event and debt services repayment of general obligation debt. All right. Some definition, or definitions of some words we use when we're talking about the budget. Cash balance. That represents the net cash after all revenues have been deposited and all expenses have been paid. Just like your checkbook at home, the, at the end of the month, it represents how much cash you have in the fund at any given moment and directly balances with cash in the bank account. It's not a good measure of how the general fund is doing at any given point because major sources of revenue come in later in the fiscal year, like personal property and real estate taxes in December, business pole, business license in March and bank stock tax in June. So if you were to look at our bank account in August, you might think we were really not doing well, but we'd get a surplus later in the year after taxes were paid. Cash balance is a better measure for the enterprise fund because the revenues are fairly steady throughout the year since we collect every two months. Fund balance, this is one that I hear thrown around a lot and there's some confusion of what it is. It's also known as carry forward, balance forward or surplus, is the excess of fund assets over its liabilities. For accounting purposes, fund balance is calculated as of year end and is based on the difference between actual revenues and expenditures for the current fiscal year added or subtracted to the fund balance from the beginning of the year. Fund balance is not a good measure for budgeting purposes of how the enterprise funds are doing because enterprise funds include assets such as buildings, machinery and infrastructure and liabilities such as pensions owed, leave accrual, customer deposits and outstanding debt. The fund balance in the enterprise fund expresses what the business is worth. It calculates how much money would be left if the business closed and all liabilities were satisfied and non-cash assets were liquidated. So if you were to look at our fund balance for the sewer, you might see three million dollars because we own land and have a building, even though we don't actually have three million dollars that we can use. Restricted fund balance includes amounts that can be spent only for the specific purposes stipulated by external resource providers, either constitutionally or through enabling legislation. Examples include loan and grant proceeds. For instance, when we get a sewer loan proceed, we can only spend it on the sewer project. We're not by law allowed to spend it on anything else. Committed fund balance includes amounts that can be used only for the specific purpose determined by a formal action of town council. Commitments may be changed or lifted only by town council action. For instance, when we were saving money for the playground, the council committed funds to the playground and those were set aside until the full amount was saved and we were able to use it. Unassigned fund balance, this is the, what most people are interested in. It's a residual classification for the general fund. This classification represents fund balance that has not been assigned to other funds and has not been restricted, committed or assigned to a specific purpose for the general fund. Unassigned funds are not reflected in the budget. Unassigned amounts technically, are technically available for any purpose, but council must approve use of unassigned funds. So I gave a little example. You start, you have your beginning year fund balance plus your actual revenue, minus your restricted and committed funds, minus your actual expenses and that's how you get your unassigned fund balance. And that's most accurately reported at the, once the year end has been closed out. Projected fund balance, this is what we usually use throughout the year to make decisions. So just like it's, it's kind of self-explanatory. It's the expected fund balance at the end of the year, assuming that you will not exceed budgeted revenues or expenses. Projected fund balance is a good measure of the general fund finances for budgeting purposes because there are not usually large unexpected expenses in the general fund and revenues are fairly predictable based on historical data like previous month's sales tax receipts, numbers of new business licenses obtained in the past year and tax assessments. Use of fund balance is expressed as a revenue line item and is necessary when budgeting expenses exceed budgeted revenues. All right. So now it's to-do list for you guys. Ask questions, provide direction to me on what you want to see in the proposed budget. And what I'm going to do after tonight, I'm going to take everything that you guys are telling me, everything I, that you're saying you want. I'm going to put it in a proposed budget and I'm going to bring it back to you guys at the March meeting for you guys to look at. And then we can discuss it in further detail at the April work session. Are there any questions about this? None?
I think it was very well explained. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Especially with the new people that's never been on this. That was really good. One thing I do, I would like to say is not done to do with budget. We need a feedback speaker up here.
Okay. You're having a hard time hearing?
I hear you more than I do anything else. And if we get somebody who talks low, we might not be able to hear them up here too good.
Okay.
So we need to get some type of speaker that we can hear. Okay. But with all that, all I'd like to do is, is keep this in a, in a nice general orderly fashion. Anybody got any concerns, questions about the budget? Melissa will answer. We can go over. I know we don't have one in front of us, but that's what we're trying to work on is to get one in front of us. But Melissa will be glad to.
I do have in your, I forgot to mention this, I'm sorry. I do have in your packets, I have the current budget as it stood. I think I printed it on January twenty-ninth or something like that. And then I also kind of just printed you a more simple budget with blank spaces on the right-hand side so you guys could fill in your own numbers if you want. It's a little bit easier to look at that simple budget, but the January twenty-ninth budget gives you an idea of where we are as of today.
Hello. Okay. So the, the numbers as far as the staff and, and that reflects, because we actually did have a budget meeting and personnel committee meeting this past month. And this reflects what we talked about. Is that correct?
So it does not because that was, I wasn't given direction, final direction on that, but that can definitely be something you guys talk about tonight. What you see in the budget before you is exactly what is budgeted for this current year that we're in with.
So that was what we had allowed last year, what we approved on, you're saying?
Correct.
Okay. Do you have a copy of what we did the other night?
I do have my copy of what we talked about and the numbers.
Okay. I would just hold on to that. I think that's something we should, that may come into play here.
Okay. Well, the first thing up is we have the trash rates. We are up for contract negotiations this year. We were up for last year, but at the last minute, waste management pulled their extra year with us, extension. Well, we don't have that anymore. So trash rates will most likely be going up either way. But Melissa's, you know, we're going to discuss it at the council meeting to give her authorization to put trash out for bid.
Mr. Mayor, do we want to go around the table with each person to person?
Yeah, that'd be good. If we want to start off with you or whoever wants to after they get done, you know, just kind of, you know, well, you raise your hand or say something, you know, just, we don't want to cut people off and this and that.
Okay. Well, I guess I'll go ahead then. I, I would definitely, the, the question of what we're going over with staff, I think is going to be rather important because that's a significant amount of budget difference, depending on which way we go. I know we're going to be talking about setting up that work session again to continue with that dialogue. So there's only so much we'll be able to do really beforehand. I would like to see the, well, request list from the different department heads at some point. You know, hear from Justin, hear from Josh, get their line item reading. That's what I'd be kind of most interested to see. We'll see how things evolve as we get around the table here. That's about all I have at the moment.
I guess I just have a couple of things. I see this letter that was in here from the citizens and I briefly talked to Chief Cecil and I'm sure he can explain more about it, but I guess.
I still, I'm sorry. It's the letter you're talking about from the Legossis? Can we save that for the actual council meeting?
That's fine.
Okay. Thank you.
But I guess with that, you were probably looking upon the, the area of, of a police officer or what?
Either that or there was a brief discussion about purchasing a radar trailer so that we could set that up and collect data. So that's what I, after reading that letter. And then I've also heard more feedback from citizens in the town about that. And Chief Cecil, of course, I'm sure he can provide all the information about that. We had briefly discussed that, but with the concerns from the citizens about the speeding in the town, I think that would be something that we could look at getting.
Yeah, that's, well, that's one of the things I have concern with too, because we've had a few people complaining about the speeding and safety in the town. And that's something that's been ongoing every year, all the time we hear about it. And I think we've done our best to try to curb it and it has gotten better. But you're still going to have it and it's going to, it's hard to get every one of them. You're going to see them. But at the same time, I'm going to tell you right now, the chief is working his tail off at odd hours all the time. You know, he's, I talk to him a lot and I see him around quite a bit. We do have money in the budget. I thought you told me it was thirty-five thousand extra for an officer. You got twenty-five here. Was, were you misquoted?
It's kind of a rough estimate. I did tell you thirty-five when we spoke. When I went back and looked, we have some money in the budget that we could utilize.
So in other words?
Twenty-five to thirty-five. 25 to 35.
We're looking about 25 to 35 extra a year to add a full-time deputy on.
To, for the part-time to become full-time.
For the part-time to become full-time, okay. So, I mean, I think that's something that, you know, council ought to look at as far as trying to remedy and trying to help with the speeding in the town, especially with all the crime that's been going on around in the county as well. The deputy, the sheriff department is low on help, they are really down low. If they get a call out the other end of the county, we don't have anybody around here. So I think if we have the money and if council sees fit to get it into the budget, you know, we can probably try to help ourselves a little bit and let the people know that we have staff and we'll try to do our best to keep the speeding down and at the same time protect the citizens.
I just want to echo that. Mark, the police chief has talked to me a little bit. What, I guess, do I have to hold this down when I talk?
Yes.
Okay, just want to make sure. He was stating that, I guess, any of the extra bodies that we have floating around town that maybe aren't designated so much to Bowling Green or Great, but at night, everybody goes home. So I think that's certainly an area. And I have been hearing a lot more of the crime scene, a lot more different kind of crimes, which is a little concerning. So, and I don't foresee that things are going to ease up anytime soon. So I do think we definitely need to think about that when we're looking at our budget.
Melissa, in, have we put in here, taken into account because we now have rears in the water? Is that going to be taken, I'd like to see something taken to an account for the budget to make up the difference for that?
Yes, I can, when I'm doing the estimated revenues, I can bring that down with what's behind on the bills.
Okay, great, thank you. And, well, I guess we haven't even gone through the job descriptions yet, so for me, salaries.
Yeah, I would need some direction on the salaries and then I could reflect it appropriately.
Say again?
Well, once I've been given some direction on the salaries, I can display it properly on the proposed budget.
Right, I said for me, it's a moot point. We just have to do the job descriptions. We don't even have people employed in those positions, so it's moot.
Down to the water. One thing Melissa and I talked about, and Melissa had really done a lot of work with it, is not raising the water rates this year. We have till 2023 to comply with the USDA for this grant money to get our rates up. If we hold it off this year, it'll show the town people that we really do care about them. And we got new meters that will be coming in. I think they're already going out for bid, is that right, Melissa?
Yes, we have a pre-bid meeting on February 11th, bid opening is on February 25th.
Okay, and it's going to take about a year to get them in and get them installed. Cutting back on the water rate, what we can do then is this next year, we can look at the possibility of, we'll have to raise the rates up, but then we can also talk about lowering the personal property tax. And that way it'll give them an offset. I mean, it's just one way of looking, you know, looking at it this year, not raising the rates. Next year, looking at raising the rates and then dropping the property taxes down. At the same time, shortly after that, the meters should all be in and then we should start getting a more accurate reading and that should help them on their water rates also. So, you know, whatever you all think and want to discuss about it.
Mark, my only thought on that, speaking from someone who has a new water meter, that also raises your rates and I don't know, to do both of those around the same time is a good idea. I feel like maybe they need to see that, because if you get a new water meter and we raise the rates at the same time, you're not going to understand, it's not all because we raised the rates. Because I can tell you every drop of water it measures, it's going to go up when you get a new meter anyway. Most of us will, don't you think, Melissa? Isn't that the case?
Yeah, that's what we've experienced when we have to replace a meter that the next month, the customer complains that their water bill's really high and it's because they hadn't had accurate readings previously.
I got a question in regards to that. For the pre-bid that's going out, is, can somebody give me a little background information in regards to that? Have we talked with the county about that? Because I know that they handled that for the Town and Port role. So are we seeking a bid from them or is this just strictly for outside contractors?
This is funded through the USDA, so the USDA state engineer basically tells us what we can and can't do. We put a request for a bid out. If they would like to bid it, they're certainly welcome to. Anybody is welcome to bid.
Understood.
So in other words, and see, that's what I was thinking earlier when we were talking. New meters are going to read more accurate. So then older meters, they slow down when they get older because they're gear-driven. So which means you're getting, let's say 10 gallons of water going through there, but it may only register eight gallons, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so we put the new meters in, 10 gallons go through, it's going to register 10 gallons. So somebody who was getting a low bill before or low water usage before should get an increase in water use?
Yes.
Correct?
Melissa, refresh my memory in August when we had our work session meeting. We were going to decrease personal property in 2023?
Correct, right.
We had agreed on that?
Yes, the council adopted a resolution committing to raising the water rates high enough to pay the water debt. And in return, we wouldn't have to make a transfer from general fund to the water fund and that would allow us to bring down the personal property taxes to give residents a little break on their personal property taxes since they'll be paying more on their water bill.
Okay, I just wanted to reiterate because I know there's people on the council that were not here in August. So just so they know, that's what's transpired.
Yes.
Now, freeing up the water rather than general funds allows us to use money for other reasons, correct?
Yes, you'll, this year, there was a large transfer, unusually large transfer from water, I'm sorry, from general fund to water for the purpose of creating a bridge loan for ourselves so we could pay the engineering fees that couldn't be financed through the interim construction loan. So we created this bridge loan for the purpose of, throughout the water project. And then the money was going to be, is going to be paid back to the general fund. However, the water fund has come into a surplus because about 70 new homes are connecting in the new Maury Heights subdivision. So it's able to now, we're able to give the money back from the water fund to the general fund and the water fund still has enough of a surplus to create its own bridge loan for itself until we close out the project and get fully all of our funds back from the USDA. So it's going to be a couple-year process, but the general fund will not be owed any money and it'll have a little bit of a surplus.
All right, here's where I'm going with that then, that council might want to think about. With the excess money that we're not, that we're getting back into general funds, we have a large debt service that's out there for 36 years, I think, left on it. Plus now we're going to tie another one in on that. By the time we pay these things off, we're going to have to turn right around and do this again. So, I mean, we ought to think about, maybe if council wants to have a line item put into budget this year to where we start paying off that debt service sooner. You know, because that's lower interest we got to pay on it. And we also don't string it out for another 36 years and then all of a sudden, right back in the boat again. You know, we don't get any leeway, we don't get any free runs or anything. So, I mean, it's just something to think about, maybe getting a lot on in the budget for that. And I don't know what you all think.
I guess we got to check and see if there's any penalty for prepayment or early payoff too.
There is definitely not a penalty from the USDA's on prepayment. That's really the only debt we have right now is that combined water sewer debt through USDA. And then ultimately, the new water project will also be financed through the USDA and they do not penalize for prepayment.
I got a question. When you state the new water project, does that include bringing a new well online that we, as council, need to look at for the town?
We are actually working right now to get all that data so that we can include, to see if the engineer can include that in the next phase. There's going to be several phases of the water project, so we're going to, looking at trying to add that in in a future phase.
I guess I understand your perspective, Mr. Mayor. The only concern, I guess, is if we run into where another well goes offline and where, you know, that process to get that well at Maury Heights, it's just capped, is, I guess, roughly 12 months. So I'm not sure of the cost that's involved to get that online so that we meet, you know, all the requirements.
Josh is working on it. I know he's talked with the DEQ about it. Because we, I know we got to work some, do some work, they got to do a drawdown on it because we got to see how much water it'll produce a day. So there's some work to be done to it. Have they done any testing with it yet to see the quality of the water?
So we found the initial testing, which I think was done in 2006, but we're meeting with Virginia Department of Health Inspector on Tuesday and we're going to talk about restarting tests now to see where it is right now.
All right, because I think it was capped because of gross alpha, wasn't it? Is why Bill and them capped it off?
So there were two tests found. The first test showed gross alpha, the second test showed that there was not a significant amount of gross alpha. And what the gentleman from Department of Health explained to us was that it could possibly have had to do with how fast they were drawing the water on the first test. But that's why we're going to make sure we start doing testing now so that we're prepared, you know, to put it online if we need to.
Yeah, because I think you got to have, what, three or four positive gross alphas in a row or something? If you miss one, then you got to start over again in order for it to go bad?
Something like that. I don't want to misspeak, I don't know exactly, but yes, that sounds right.
All right, but yeah, I see what you're saying. I mean, you know, we can, we can set a, you know, you can set a line item up, I believe, and use it, but doesn't necessarily mean that we have to at the time. I mean, I'm not quite sure on all the legalities of it, maybe you can help us out, Melissa. I see what he's saying because of the well, you know, we got another well that's coming offline in two, four years, I think it is. Yeah, 2025, we got to take another one off. So that's going to drop us 100 gallons a day, I think it is. No, what is it, 10,000? 100,000? Excuse me, 100,000 gallons a day is going to drop us.
Well, we're going to replace that with the new well.
Right, that's if, that's if Maury Heights well pans out. You're right, it is. But we don't know what the draw is on it yet or the expense. We still got to pipe it and everything. So, you know, we're looking at money there. But, you know, I'm just saying, we're going to be hanging ourselves out with a lot of debt service. We need to try to start figuring out some way to maybe start paying some of it off earlier, whether it's 10 years early or five years or whatever, you know, to try to help in the long run. I just think, you know, we'll be looking, doing it all over again.
Melissa, I see the bank stock taxes increased $100,000. What are you basing that on?
The previous year's assessments were extreme, ended up being really low. So the 100, 100,000 extra that you see in the budget, that was what was budgeted for 20, the current budget year, that's because that's what we got last budget year. So the assumption is that it'll remain steady.
We got more even last year.
We got three.
We estimated low.
We got 300,000, I believe, last year. And I should be getting the actual number really soon from the bank. Usually like in February I get and so we can put an accurate number in there.
Mr. Mayor? Okay, excuse me. Okay, I think I'm hearing that, you know, we're going to have some areas, we're going to have some excess funds and we're going to have some areas that we're going to have some new things running to spend on. I will 100% agree with you, paying down debt is a good thing. I do it every month myself. Hopefully we can. But I do think that we are a little early. We need a little more data, a little more testing on the wells and stuff. Might give us a better idea. I don't think we were trying to come up with any kind of consensus to set anything in stone right now anyway. But, yeah, I think we should keep an open mind on the things that we're going to be looking forward. I, again, am looking forward to hearing from the department heads' individual needs and get them in here, get them on the Zoom and go through all, everything that they're requesting. But yeah, that water is going to be the biggest issue, I think, and then public safety.
Anybody else got anything they want to talk about and see what Melissa can do? We got about 15 minutes and I think we can probably cut it short, about maybe 10. Give us a five-minute break or we do a 10-minute break, whatever you want.
I have a question, Melissa, on the town hall rental. Is it the same for people that live in the town or the county as in outside or do you rent it to people outside?
We rent it to whoever will pay us and everyone, we charge everyone the same.
All right, might want to look at that rental on that, especially if it's for a wedding. A lot of people get a lot more money than that and you've got tables and chairs and, and don't you give them all day use?
Yes.
Yeah, we're really low on that.
Are you saying we're low as in we underestimated or you're saying we're low as in our rental, individual rental fee is low?
I'm sorry, I'm saying we're lowing on, low on the rental fee.
Okay.
Yeah, and it's 750?
It is 575.
575, yeah.
I agree that that's definitely on the low end.
Yeah, we really should triple that, to be honest.
And you'd still be way under.
You could charge by the hour. I mean, really, someone needs to talk about.
According to what I'm looking at, it was 20,000 last year?
That's what we had estimated getting. Because of the pandemic, we didn't, we're not going to come anywhere near that.
So we didn't anywhere near do that, did we?
Not, not, not this year, no.
So how much did we get from the movie people who were here, touchstone?
They paid 575 for the rental of the town hall all day. We didn't do a different.
They paid 575?
Yes, for using town hall.
Wow, okay. So I do concur that we need to increase. I mean, they're a film company, we could have got at least 3,000 because they utilize the outside area, they utilize in here. Wow.
I mean, what about the police force that it took to, like?
They were paid by the hour per officer for their off-duty costs. So they, that did not include any staff or officers or anything. They just, they got charged the exact same rental fee that anyone else using the building would have been charged.
Yeah, I think maybe, if somebody would volunteer, I mean, I'm not, maybe, Tammy, you know about wedding venues or you and Melissa, somebody should get together and really think about this space. Especially now with the technology that we have, it just, we really do need to utilize that. And this is a huge space indoors that, you know, and I know this year we didn't do anything because of COVID, but we. you know, and I know this year we didn't do anything because of COVID, but we need to think about the future here, and things will be opening up. I mean, and, so would, someone like to volunteer to do that?
Well, yes, I would.
Thank you, Tammy. Thank you, Councilwoman Gaines.
I have all those numbers, I can tell you.
Uh, we can do a committee at the facilities committee, maybe if you would-
Yeah, makes sense at the facilities.
And then you guys could discuss and come up with-
Put that on for the next one.
Is that, okay.
Thank you, guys.
Anybody else on any other subject on the budget?
Can I just touch on one thing that hadn't been discussed yet, revenue-wise?
You go ahead.
Uh, and I'll just say, personal property and real estate tax, if you guys might want to discuss.
Real estate taxes. Assessments, I guess you all got your assessments to see how much they went up. Uh, I know I had some of mine go up a hundred percent, uh, sixty percent. I had one that went down two percent. Uh, but we can't charge the same rate because we would break people. So we need to talk about balancing out the rate, dropping it back down to where we get our, uh, straight line again with, with, about where we're at now. Uh, we'll still have some that's going to be higher because of the increases, you know, the, the amount of percentage that it went up. Uh, so you're not going to get everybody back down at the same level, but that is something that we need to get Melissa working on. As soon as she gets the stuff from the county, the assessments, the assessment book, she'll get on to that, and then we'll have to adopt another rate. Is that it? If so, we'll, uh-
Just one little quickie.
Yes, ma'am.
On the meals tax?
Yes.
Is that down because of COVID anticipation for 2021 staying as is, or do you anticipate it may go up?
We, uh, for the FY 2021 budget year, we had anticipated it would go down, and in fact, it did not go down. So our revenues are going to be higher in 2021 for meals tax.
And I'd like to personally thank everybody who supported our restaurants, because I'll tell you what, they, they really pulled through this year with, with everybody around here. Uh, the meals tax shows that, uh, they're higher this year than they were last year.
I have one more question. The funds that were set aside for all the special events, harvest festival, wine festival, and all that, where did, were they just carried over?
So those all reside in the events and activities fund, and what generally happens with those is their revenues and expenses are pretty much a wash. A lot, sometimes we'll get a few thousand dollars, and the few, the thou, few thousand dollars stays in that activities and event fund, but since there was revenue, no revenue and no expenditure, they just pretty much canceled each other out.
Anybody else? Hearing none, do I hear a motion to adjourn the, uh, session number one, uh, budget work, uh, session?
I'd so move.
Second.
I got a first by Gene, second by, uh, Jeff, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Or adjourn, see back here at seven o'clock.